To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kelly, if you could take attendance, please.
Larry Fiddler.
Here.
Brad Jay. Brandon Tinker.
Here.
Bryce Powell.
Here.
Scott Stairwell.
Any additions or deletions to tonight's agenda? Kelly, do you have anything?
No.
Adam, you're good.
Thank you.
If we could remove the following items, just off tonight's agenda, they will reappear in January and so on and so forth. But if we could remove item 10A, item 10B, as in Bravo, item 10C, and item 10E. I can give a motion for a few more of those?
Motion.
Thank you. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, this will bring us to the public hearing for additional appropriation. Open it up this time for questions. Okay, no questions, we'll close that. And then that will bring us to resolution 2025-7. If there are no questions, council looking for a motion?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. And then approval of minutes from the November 18th, 2025 meeting?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay, claims and transfers.
From General, $114,508.33.
Thank you, second.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
From Water, $37,779.62.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
From Wastewater, $341,497.60.
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
There's gonna be an 99, bud.
From Payroll, $51,941.38.
Motion.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? Aye.
Water Solutions Unlimited, invoice number 7264499, and the amount of $4,251.80. This is routine chemicals.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Sod Buster Excavating Invoice, and the amount of $2,750.
Approval?
What's this?
That is the removal of the excess dirt from the water line project.
Twenty-five dollars, well, it's for that price, huh?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And American Legal Publishing, invoice number 46821, and the amount of $3,618.39.
What is four?
This is for updating our town code. Could approve the minutes down here.
Yeah. Motion. Or a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's all.
Thank you, Kelly. Adam?
You got your packets for the month and yearly end of the year coming up quick. The plan's running smooth on our side at the best of our knowledge. The gallon exchange is almost complete. Mid-February is when we're expecting our final three gallons to be brought into us. That's all I have, unless you have any questions to me.
Counsel?
I'm good.
Thank you. All right, Jason?
We've got Eric Smith with us tonight, HWC Engineering. If you want him to speak on a couple of the projects, then I can finish up after you.
Perfect.
Thanks, Jason. Got an update, I think you all got on the three active projects. I'm gonna do the wastewater one last, but I think Brad may wanna talk to about one of those items on that project. But on the US-231 North, water supply improvements to Ready Funded Project, that project is now complete. We've used all of the funds that were allocated for construction. If you recall, we had instructed our contractor, B&amp;T, to go as far as they could with the funds that we had. So we have a final pay application for them that will be submitted to the Ready Region for payment. The amount due is $175,291.80. We've signed that, there's two copies there, one for you and one to send in. We recommend that be approved.
That was $175,291.08.
Yes.
Counsel, is there a motion for that payment?
So move.
Second is Bryce. All in favor? Aye.
Skipping ahead to the Oak Grove Water Project, the plans and design is approximately 75% complete. Design will continue on that for the rest of 2025, till the end of the year. We are looking to advertise for bids in January with a bid opening in February. All of that to coincide with the Oak Grove requirements as far as schedule. We will review the final plans with Jason and Richard. I do have tonight some permit applications. We have one with IGN for the notice of intent to construct a water main extension. And then the other two are for NDOT. One is the permit application, and then the other is a bond or permit fee waiver, by just being a signature on those.
Do you need to take this with you?
It could be scanned. Yeah, those can get signed whenever the scanner backs us. Then on the wastewater, the Phase 3 work is now all complete except for there's one section of sewer that we added toward the end of Phase 3, which I think is basically two manhole runs that should be completed in the next week or two. And there are two top halves on two laterals that need to be completed. And that will essentially complete Phase 3. We do have three proposals for back trucks that I think Brad will wanna talk about a little bit. And once those are purchased, there is still gonna be a little over $100,000 left in the project fund that we can do something with. So Brad, if you wanna talk a little bit about the back truck truck proposal?
All right, so in your packets, there is the breakdown sheets between the three trucks I demoed. I'm wanting to purchase the Eco 900 program equipment. I understand that's the highest bid on there, but my reason being is, one, if we plan to keep our truck for 20 to 25 years, as we did the last one, this one is going to be the easiest maintenance-wise, pretty much twelve-hole signal and hydraulics. So we could possibly do a lot of work in-house, but also their shop is out of Indianapolis. One of the other vendors on there, I'd say is the closest truck as far as comparability, their office is out of Ohio. So if our truck went down, that's more days than it could be down.
Which vendor was that?
M-Tech is out of Ohio.
Where's Best Equipment at?
Best Equipment's out of Indianapolis as well.
Okay. The... So I see the one's a freightliner, what's the Brown and the M-Tech?
They were both freightliners as well.
All of them are freightliners?
Yeah. The Best Equipment truck, it comes with a two-engine system. So they would have a primary engine as far as running the drive-through truck, and they have a secondary auxiliary engine for running the water system. It's a gas motor, the water pump, and then a diesel for the truck. Both fuel tanks are next to each other. I feel like that's just a problem we could have. If I send a laborer to get fuel or something, I feel pretty easy to mix fuel or something like that, so there's one of my things that I'd like on that truck.
They have PTO pumps in either of them?
The Brown Equipment has a front engine PTO, the other two are transfer case driven. So the other two trucks, you would lock them in gear for the transfer case, and we'll lock it up in fourth gear to initiate transfer case. So there is a chance of, if we were to engage while we have revved up, could be a safety problem. Not saying it's a common issue, but it is a possibility. The Brown Equipment truck, being a front engine PTO, it's in neutral, there's no chance of it jumping in gear trying to do anything. I will say they have it in stock, the other ones are 90 to 120 days out.
As you can see by the sheets, the Brown would not be the lowest, but they could, I would, after discussing this with Brad and listening to him this evening, they would be the most responsive, which would give you the ability to go with Brown if you so choose, and you wouldn't have to go below us. I think he brought up some good points in that the equipment would be serviced nearby, and I think most importantly, it's available.
Yeah, they gotta sit on the wall, waiting if we were to...
The boom, now, I'm not going to sit here and pretend to be an expert in back trucks, although you probably think I am, I'm not. But it's... Sorry, I don't possess it. You're okay. It's cold, it flew, see? I don't know if speaking of boom on this truck's better than the others, or arguably made.
Yes.
And there's also an extra 200 feet of hose. I think we throw that in with... During a couple of presentations, there were some questions on one of the other manufacturers, how the truck even worked, that person earlier didn't know, which concerns me if we ever have a problem, then we have to call the vendor who we're going to get. And one of the other vendors had just started repping this type of truck. And what concerns me there is, if that relationship ever ends, so does our contact. So I think with all that in place, if you so choose, you could follow the recommendation of Brad and go with the truck from Brown Equipment.
Well, I mean, there's only $3,500 to $4,000 difference, if you look at all of it. Other than the, I mean, the back system's got same hosing, but other than that, the truck exceeds the other competitors. I mean, if we're moving through, and it's already AIS certified, and the other two weren't...
I don't think that matters.
Well, but it... You're gonna have to get it serviced, I don't want it gone, but...
Yeah, we did have that conversation to make sure that wasn't the qualification that we had to adhere, that they had to adhere to.
Okay.
Since it's not construction material, SRF doesn't require, since it's rolling stop.
Yeah, I figured it'd have to be.
We did have them checking to it, but it wasn't required.
Well, see, I did, if you have any extensive questions, I did ask for some of them to come.
The truck obviously has more options than the other two. And for, in my opinion, three or four grand for the other stuff we're given, and it's on the lot, and we don't have to wait 190 to 150 days. I think that merits the...
The biggest worry I have is, if we keep it 20 years, well, there's nothing wrong with keeping the truck, we keep up on maintenance, but if they're a simple twelve-hole system and hydraulic system, and we can work on it, we can still get parts for it, you know, we can have hydraulic one made here. At that town, but the other trucks had a little more complex sensors and touchscreens, and we get 10 years down the road, and that's a new system, or obsolete, and we're either looking at upgrading that system, or...
Well, like you said, it's not a big concern of yours, but having a PTO pump versus... That's, to me, that's a no-brainer.
I'll make a motion.
Whoa, go ahead.
I've actually got a question, not unless you know, if not, I will ask you to please state your name and then stand up when answering the question. I'm assuming warranty is apples to apples on all three quotes. Should something break, right, on your truck? Yeah, please, and state your name.
I'm John Eric Bennett with Brown Equipment. Our truck is a one-year warranty, chassis warranty, and miles of warranty. You're gonna get the standard engine manufacturer for the Cummins and the Allison transmission warranty.
Do we know about the other two quotes?
It was in the biz, but I did not put it in that sheet there. I can give the info if you want to, or...
I think that's something I missed.
I'm saying, I think Jason might have the biz, I don't know that that was broken out.
The, if they're all freightliners, I mean, the motor and transmission's...
Your competition, is that pretty much a standard across the board?
From what I've encountered, yes. It's about here.
They were all the three Cummins freightliner. When I was the base model, all of them was the 114ST freightliner.
When you say servicing, will we be servicing this new truck with whomever we go in-house if it's a simple oil change?
If it does not...
Or do you have to take it back to where we bought it from?
If it does not void factory warranties, then I would do it in-house. If it would void any warranties, then I would suggest taking it to the dealership until the warranty was up, but...
Yeah.
Does it void, if we do simple oil change, that's not voiding factory warranty by any means of...
Are you talking on the module or the chassis?
On the, no, on the motor, transmission, all that chassis.
I believe if you use OEM...
Just OEM parts?
Keep your seats.
Yeah. Okay.
Kind of as far as hydraulic lines or repairs, that's, I mean, we can do that completely in-house, as far as most items.
And this truck is in stock?
Yes, sir.
Is this your best price?
Yes.
They...
I gotta ask.
Yeah, I, yeah.
He's got a car salesman sitting next to him, I didn't even ask, so good for you.
I will say they did come down price, their original price was, well, you guys came down $60,000, I believe?
Twenty.
Was it twenty?
It was five seventy, I believe, down to...
Five forty-nine. I thought you were down to low five.
You said between Brown, Brown and Best are the two closest if we need service, right?
Yes.
M-Tech's in Ohio.
Counsel, I, hey, will need to note for the record that regardless whatever direction we go with, funds are, funds are there, and this purchase is covered.
And ultimately, I mean, it sure goes with decision, but either of the three trucks is better than what we currently have.
Whoa.
I would add, once you make your decision, I'll have to package it up and submit it to the SRF and have them approve the purchase, but given what we've justified tonight, I don't see an issue.
Thanks for having me. Anything else you wanna add?
That's all I have on my truck.
Question?
This is a tandem axle truck?
Yes, sir.
Okay, a water pump that drives your jet, is it a pulse, or is it...
It's a single piston.
Single piston.
So we have a lever on there that will either get that pulse action that you can get, or you can keep it running smooth.
Okay, so how many RPM do you have to bring in to keep it smooth?
So any RPM, so we have a fixed throttle, so with those chassis manufacturers, those engine manufacturers, a lot of people, they'll control, they can go up 100 RPM or whatever. Ours, I mean, flip it and work on it, goes to 900, then it'll go to 1400 and 1700. The reason for that is those DPF filters, all that stuff, it gets clogged. We do it based on the engine manufacturer, so we control the throttle, we have a fixed throttle for that. There's no bump at all unless you...
How many foot of hose comes in?
About 600.
600?
But that's way more than...
Yeah, both of them's 400.
Well, it's 200 more than the other two.
All your filters and stuff, pull that one aside, my great counsel. I used to work with your counsel.
That is great.
It's a same truck. Same truck, okay.
You can tell who has operated a back truck before and who hasn't.
Yes.
It's a good truck, Recast is a great truck.
Same one.
Richard, do you wanna add, because I know you've done it.
I could answer those questions.
Just making sure.
Counsel, any questions? Do we wanna vote on this?
I'll make a motion, go with Brown.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Hey, Brandon?
I got one more question. On your screen, how many cameras do you have, front and rear? Can I actually see it from the cab?
I'd have to look at...
Usually, I agree on the build sheet, on that build sheet, Jason?
Jason, you have it?
Is that cameras on just the front or rear, or do we have the blind spot?
I'm just asking for saving.
I believe it's front and rear for sure, I'm 100% sure on the blind spot.
They did say, I should say, they did mention that you were gonna wrap this truck at no charge, they told me? Is that, no?
I don't, I don't think that's correct.
Okay, that's fair, that's fair too.
The PTO pump, I mean...
It doesn't say how many cameras?
I was just asking for saving.
No, it's great questions.
I can get back to you guys on that, if you want to do it.
I believe it was just front and rear. I don't think I asked for anything else, the only thing extra I asked for as far as hardship was the lighting.
So you had the lighting?
Eric, do you wanna add anything else? First of all, thank you for coming and answering, obviously, more intelligent questions than Mr. Shagley's questions, or any council member. And congratulations on the sell.
You know, Christmas is like two...
Eric, all I got.
You got the greatest.
No.
All right, Jason, you wanna take over?
Yeah, before Brad leaves, I would like to let the council know and congratulate Brad on his passing of the state wastewater operator license, and he is a certified wastewater operator.
Goodness, you do, bud.
Congratulations.
We're looking at possibly going forward with drinking water license as well. Kind of nice to have you, we still have UMAC as our licensed operator right now, but it just gives us opportunities and a little bit of insurance to move forward, so.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Brad, for giving me that.
That's huge.
That, sorry, that wasn't really on the agenda, but...
That's fine. It's well deserved.
I did wanna go back briefly though, with Eric, where we were talking about the I-70 water project, again, this is the water line going under 70. If you recall, where we stopped, we're about 1,000, just a little over 1,000, I think 1,017, is what I calculated, feet, that is still unconstructed from the end of that 10-inch vein to where the new 10-inch vein exists to the north. So we're 1,000 feet short of completing that project. It's a, it's a piece of the project I'd have loved to complete, honestly, we're gonna have to complete at some point. Jammer Construction, they are here tonight, happened to be here, and I just asked them to quote what it would, what it would cost to complete that section, and they provided me a quote of eighty, this is including pipe, $82,590. Of that, $27,590 of that was the pipe itself. The contractor that has done the rest of the work, the pipe is sitting up there along 231 now, there is that possibility to purchase that pipe from B&amp;T Drainage, from them, I have not spoken with them about that, but I think there's that possibility of that. So if we were to purchase that, then Jammer would be looking at $30,000 in labor and $25,000 in rock removal. That rock is what cost us time, why we didn't get that 1,000 feet done, was because of the rock. They're aware of that rock. You know, at this point, we're looking at $82,590 to finish that section. I get a call from Eric today, and we are going to be under about $42,000 on that project because of the lack of using non-construction costs. So I think it was inspection primarily.
All the non-construction costs were local, the ready funds were all construction, and the non-construction were basically engineering inspection. Inspection was hourly, not to succeed, and it was based on how much we were out there while the contractor was building it. We're not gonna use all of that because he's done. And there was also additional funds in easements, so between those two line items, there's $42,000 that we won't be using. I'm just letting Jason know that that's, could be returned to the funds that they came from, or that it's gonna be all used.
You'd have to stop telling Jason every month.
Well, usually, that's the fun.
I might have been telling him that there's money, he's got it.
So we're...
Asking the other thing is the hard part.
Now, this is not ready money, this is money that town has set aside. So this isn't like we're being gifted $42,000. This is money that's sitting in account that we have basically set aside to do this project, that we unexpectedly just found out, and it was late this afternoon when I got this news, so that's kind of, I really talked to Kelly about that this afternoon, and just bring it to you for your consideration.
So, no, I would like to comment on this because I, looking at the big picture, and what I believe is the town's goal for future growth, I think it's a phenomenal idea to go ahead and finish that line, and then when time is right, to go ahead and make the final connection, right? And be reported to, I believe, we spoke about the water tower, for future development north of I-70 specifically is what I'm talking about, right? Doing the work now and having those funds there, counsel, it's just my opinion, we're just, I say it to everybody I talk to, we are literally preparing this town for future success that is, it's right there. So I think it's, I think it's a great idea.
With this, though, I just threw this on Kelly four o'clock today, so...
So I don't think we need to take any action on this right now, because number one, I would like for you to go back to the E or BT drainage, and let's get a hard quote on the material that's on ground currently, because that's a big unknown, right? We don't know what their solid number is. We have, you said J-Mar is here?
Yes.
Yeah, we have a hard quote for J-Mar, which includes signed, sealed, delivered, but if we can get the product that's already on ground cheaper, it makes sense from a town's standpoint.
The only thing I would say is that quote is only good until, for 30 days, because the price of the pipe, you just never know.
Okay, so...
But it's not gonna change how much I would tag, so...
You can, I'm asking, you can tell me, no. Let's see, there's some 1421-28. We're just outside of 30 days for our next meeting, will you honor that quote at least till our next meeting?
Yeah.
To give Jason time to get with the other company that has the material on the ground, so we can see, if you don't mind. And then we will vote on this in January. Thank you so much.
And the funding is, like, we have funds available, correct?
So I believe Jason got with Kelly on that?
Yeah, I had, I did not have hard numbers, just have to look at it, but there's, especially like, we've got, there's always some money sitting there, so I can take a look.
Okay, well, no, then I would agree 100%, would see, see if we invited the stuff that's already on the ground, and...
Larry, good with that? Okay, next.
Okay, sorry.
Do you wanna know where we left off?
Yeah, sure.
Please get a quote for the material that's on ground.
Okay.
And then we will vote on this in the January meeting.
What do you have to add?
Yes.
What's it all about?
Please.
The town will provide all the materials, fittings, water, the whole...
We were just talking about the pipe, if I'm not mistaken. Or what else, what all is on the ground?
Just pipe, pipe, just water is on the...
So when we say materials, that's the only thing we're referring to, right?
I would assume we probably need to get a quote for all of the materials that we're gonna need.
Because I could get Harry, if I'm buying materials like certain fittings that you guys don't have on the ground up there, and you're buying some, that's just too many wires to cross.
So I think we need to limit this to pipe only, because I believe that's the only thing that's on the ground up there.
Yeah, I would like to see if you're gonna provide the pipe to provide the fittings as well.
So how do we know...
The warranties aren't, because if I buy a fitting, and it doesn't work with the pipe you guys have, then there's too much liability on my end.
So let me ask you this, how do we know what fittings we're going to need without actually digging?
That would just be according to whatever the plans were for that project. If it's C-900, then we would get fittings that were adaptable to C-900, they're not going to iron.
I can get a price on that.
I can help with that as well, it's not a problem to do that, I just don't wanna get too many wires crossed and warranty work and...
Right, no, and I understand completely, I think, I can tell you from council's point of view or aspect, there's pipe on the ground.
Yeah.
Right, if we can buy it for a cheaper price, no offense, that makes sense, it's the route to go, right?
Right.
And he was okay with that, I asked him to go ahead and add it, just in case, but I think you were okay with using that pipe.
Yeah, I mean...
Yeah, I mean, but is it, is it something too if we contact whoever it is, say we wanna do this? Say, hey, we're interested at that price, we're gonna send our guy down to look at it. And he's got at least a rough guess on what we're looking at. You know?
Yes, I can, I can get a total pipe and things.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure everybody's comparing apples to apples, so.
Yes, I like it. It's good.
And the only thing in that quote that I did add, Jason, was saying if we have to put that on rock or if there is rock, we probably need to bed that in some type of sand, but I just didn't know how much or what you guys wanted to do as far as the spec on that.
Probably better provide the details for the plans of the original job and then I can send you a PDF of that.
If you get, yeah, if you get that.
That way it's, that way it's built the same way as the rest of it.
Yeah, I just can't believe you guys found rock out there.
I don't think.
The, the only other thing I would, I would argue is I don't know, do you, do we need to get another quote?
I, I wrote down my
Okay.
list of things to check on because of the dollar amount.
Okay, well.
So I'll check on that, I'll get to you.
Okay. Let's just, I'm just getting this together as, as a possibility.
Okay. What else you got?
Next thing is the old vac truck. Um now that we purchased a new vac truck, we have an old vac truck. I will say that we had originally talked about possibly taking the, the vac off of the back and getting a dump bed installed on that and making it a dump truck, could be a much bigger dump truck. The mileage on that truck is forty some.
Forty-six thousand.
Forty-six thousand, so it's still one mileage.
What year?
Ninety-nine? Is that ninety-nine?
I believe it's ninety-nine. It's got a Caterpillar 2208.
It's disturbing.
So, you know, it's probably still got some use in it. But with that said, I had a gentleman here today that looked at equipment. As a matter of fact, he's been working with the county to liquidate some of their old surplus equipment as well, that he does auctioneering of heavy equipment. And I was just chatting with him about a construction project. Vince from Hanning. And and I told him that we may have a vac truck, we may be purchasing a new one tonight, and I said, would you mind taking a look at it? He came over, looked at, talked to Brad today, took some pictures of the truck, um looked it over and he thinks that he could probably get us a retail price rather than what we would get in on trade-in. So that's why if you wouldn't have bought the truck, I didn't even consider that. I think we've got other options, whether we do put a dump bed on it or do sell that one. So he's supposed to give me some numbers of what he thinks it should sell for. So there could be some additional funds coming back. I don't know what that number is yet, but hopefully I'll have something for you.
I'd like, I'd like to see those numbers, because my, my biggest thing is, is the, our current dump truck, it was wasn't gonna be studded and deleted. It's not, so at some point in the future, we're gonna have to go back through the same process we just went through.
Yeah, that, oh, fair.
So if, if it's more financially feasible to sell, if there's a way to sell the vac and put a dump truck, dump bed on the big truck. Because at, at some point, we're gonna go right back through what we just went through on the.
If I could introduce something, the, the main reasoning for wanting a bigger truck or another truck is we get in situations where mainly in the winter, we're out plowing and we have a salt spreader embedded in one truck. When we get in the middle of an emergency dig, we've gotta come back to the shop, take the body out to be able to haul dirt, and then we gotta clean the body, be able to put the salt spreader back in and just be a lot nicer if we had a truck that we could not have to worry, we could haul standard rock or whatever we need for a dig and not have to mess with the salt spreader.
Yeah, that was my, I just wanna see the options on both because.
Yeah, it just, and I'll throw this in, but, and I've not done anything with this yet, but during our conversations, he's, like I said, he's working with Putnam County to liquidate some of their surplus. Apparently they've got two bigger sized dump trucks that are, they're not operational right now, but they do have aluminum.
Stainless.
Or stainless.
Or this thing?
Stainless. Stainless, um, dump beds, um, which have value. I don't know why they're not operational. But it's a very, it's, it's a possibility that we could talk to the county about acquiring those somehow. Now, there may be repairs after being made, well, obviously there's gonna have to be repairs that have to be made to this, these trucks. But I'd like to at least investigate what that situation is. So it would be nice to have a truck, it's not gonna be used very often, but a larger sized dump truck. If we could acquire cheap, free, put minimal money into it, like since then, we could be using it for you know, definitely winter operations, it would be nice. Uh, and, and kind of like you, you were talking about the salt duster invoice, or that would have been the perfect truck to haul that dirt off that we were doing, where if you had twenty-two, you'd have probably five trips with that thing.
Right, one is also, we have rock delivered to us every so often, you know, Triax or something, where I could send Brad there, somebody, you know, on a slow day, yeah, just run to the quarry and then we don't have a haul ability step. I got us thirty minutes of time running up there and back.
Yeah, we've kind of been talking, now that the, the vac truck is in place, and, and we might put this on the agenda for next month, Kelly, first, with your guys' permission, is equipment, because we're looking at doing some shuffling of equipment and this could play into that. Where we've kind of talked about doing something with the backhoe, these hip steer. Maybe combining that along with purchasing this truck. I think we could do this and kind of ahead, so. I don't think it's gonna have a huge financial impact on us, so I think.
That'd be something I think, you know, offline, and I'm not saying I'm an expert, but I got quite a few connections in the equipment business. And obviously he does. He's, and he's smart enough to like talk with all of us, get our opinions and then bring it, we'll kind of just make us a presentation on what you guys want to do.
We're, we're kind of, I mean, really the first thing we wanted to do was get the back truck situation. We know where we stand now, we know where we're going forward. We also know what kind of timeframe we're looking at too, so. Hardworking at that, so we'll, we'll bring that to you the next, next meeting. I-70 project, please talk about this, right? Uh, CCMG, I just, I wanted to congratulate you.
I hope so.
Service pump, let me go back to service pump and machine invoices. Uh, on number one, service pump and machine invoices. This is, we talked about this at the last meeting, we purchased pumps last July in hopes that we would be able to get them into the wastewater project. Um it was approved by SRF.
SRF.
SRF to include those in the project, so that, that was ab, abnormal for the process of how we've been doing that. And Kelly wanted to bring that forward and make sure you were aware of that.
Yeah, typically we just submit it to IFA and they go ahead and take care of the bill directly. This time we had, those bills had been hanging out since July and this was a small owned company. And so we got the approval just to go ahead and pay the invoices upfront and then IFA is going to reimburse the town. So I wanted to make you all aware of that and ask for your approval blessing on what was done, make sure that's good.
Obviously it's already been done, council, but let's just go ahead. Is there a motion on this?
So move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, sorry about that, you had a word. Uh, CCMG, uh, this community crossings matching grant. We were notified last week that we did receive, um, the grant that we applied for, so we will be doing some reservicing of our really, really poorly maintained streets here in town. I think I sent the list to you at one point, I don't know if it's in, in your packet now, but I can get those to you if you need that, but I believe three of them were started ourselves, there were three in the, where I consider the old town. So that, I don't know if you know Eric Quinnwell, I know that's not under your area, but.
I think we're, we're probably scheduled to get that out of bid in January. Because if there is a tight window, you gotta get a bid and get a order from NDOT by, I think, March first.
We'll get that moving. It's, it's, it's a pretty small.
I wouldn't want, it was very competitive this time since they changed the process, that there were a lot of communities that got turned down.
I'm glad we didn't.
How many miles were we able to?
No, it's not even a mile. I'll have to, I have to.
I think it was around thirty-five hundred feet.
It wasn't a huge distance. Uh, the, the street, just so you know, the streets that we selected were the the poorest conditions that are rated on the paint of that pavement pass that management plan. We selected all of the streets that were of the poorest condition with the exception of the sewer plant road, which only has one house on it, um and is used basically just for our town employees. So, and we may be doing some things out there in the near future, so I really didn't wanna put new asphalt down there. And then also Monon Avenue, um that was one of the ones that was rated very poorly, um that we did not do, but we're also trying to prepare for a CCMG project specifically on Monon Avenue. So I didn't want to put asphalt down and two years from now come back and, and do that again, so. We will have eliminated all of our worst condition streets in town after this project. And it was just, it was a hundred and forty thousand or whatever, I think, because the project, so it was a pretty small project. Um but congratulations, we did get a word of that. Uh, the next thing is the Buckeye Power Sales Quote. Um, last meeting we tabled that. Um, we did some investigation and I'm, I'm still not sure where we stand. I called Buckeye twice. I've not gotten a response back. Um but we did have another contractor come out and take a look. I actually went out with the contractor. Most of the, I'm not an expert in this field, but it sure looked like most of the things were in, that was in the quote from Buckeye. It, it appeared that it had been done, been done recently, so I don't know if there was a misunderstanding or a miscommunication or why we have a quote to do some things that looked to me like they were recently done. I don't know. Um but we have not signed a, uh, an agreement to do that work. It was almost four thousand dollars. So hopefully I'll get a response, but the other contractor did look through all of our generator and he felt that it was in, in pretty good working order, so it was a, it was a competitor. So that's all I have for the moment.
Thank you. Kelly?
Every month there are reports in your packet. We're wrapping up the year. Everything looks pretty good so far. There will be, a little down the agenda, there's a transfer resolution that I will ask, request if you all can pass. It's just kind of the regular spending. We spend a little bit more in that supply instead of a service line, so that's just kind of moving, moving things to get our budget ready for the end of the year. Financial institution and commercial vehicle excess tax. Um, the state legislator used to dictate the revenue, that the revenue from those two items be split between general motor vehicle highway and cube cap development. They're now allowing us to put all of it into general. We're only talking about for those combined about four hundred dollars a year, so it's not a whole lot. So I'm just letting you know that that revenue, that typically was split three ways is now gonna go into general, um, starting in December's payout. Um, public official bonds, you have in your packet a copy of all the bonds, um, for all of, for myself, for Becca, Tammy and Blanket Bond for the redevelopment. I just had your approval to accept that and then when that's done, I will take it to the courthouse and get that recorded.
Any questions on that?
Nope.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Brings us to Resolution 2025 dash eight, as Kelly just means, mentioned, um, transfer resolution. There are no questions. Is there a motion on this?
I'll make a motion to approve and can I make a motion to wait a second?
You don't even, you don't even need a second.
Don't need it.
But the resolution, that's my mistake, I'm agenda.
Okay, no problem.
Motion.
Second.
Motion was made by Bryce, second one's by Larry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Jason, back to you, uh, to the farm ground rental, please.
Um, are those in the packets?
Yes.
Um, I went through and changed the original template of the farm ground rental to what I think that is acceptable with you guys after having that conversation last month, so if you wanna take a look through that, see if there's anything of concern. Um, we do have time, obviously this is something that can wait until spring, but I'm sure our farmers will like to know.
Are there any bids or is this just our version?
This is ours. We will, we, what we'll do is, once you, you've okayed this, we'll send this to, or we'll make it public so.
No, I.
So farmers can.
I looked through that. I, I didn't know, I was thinking there are bids. I, I'll make a motion to approve those.
Larry, do you have any concerns on it?
No. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, um, this will bring us to the current openings we have for town, uh, board appointments. I'm just gonna run through them real quick. Um, redevelopment commission, redevelopment authority board, park board, and the Putnam County Visitors Bureau.
I will say, uh, on the visitors bureau, Heather Kling, who's a teacher here at the school in FFA advisor, she's going to get with her boss to see if he would allow her to step out for
Thirty minutes.
a couple hours for the meetings to be on that that she has interest in.
If she gets that approval, please have her get ahold of Kelly, uh, or myself, so we can maybe knock this one off the list. Uh, but those are the current openings that we have for, uh, the coming year. Can any interested parties please reach out to Kelly or myself?
Pardon, excuse me. Um, David, there have been some people who will allow, or require, well, I don't use my words. They would like to be reappointed to serve again.
Okay.
Um, David Fish would like reappointed to the redevelopment commission and redevelopment authority board. And Justin Witt is willing to serve another term on the park board. If council chooses.
That kind of cleared this list up, huh? So David Fish is going to renew for the commission and authority board. And Justin Witt for park board, correct?
Yes.
So that will leave us, um, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna run through this. So for the redevelop, redevelopment commission, uh, since we have two open spots, one, um, filled by town council president and one council appoint. Let's go ahead and do the council appoint. Um, is there a motion for David Fish for that open position?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Therefore that will leave one president appoint for the redevelopment commission. There is one opening for the redevelopment authority board, uh, that is a president appoint. Council, I would still like your blessing, uh, to renew, uh, David Fish, uh, for that position.
Do we need to make a motion or second?
Motion.
Second. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we have one position open on the park board. Justin Witt has said that he would renew, uh, if there is any motion in the second. Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So again, just real quick, that will leave one position on the redevelopment commission and one position on the Putnam County Visitors Bureau still open as of this meeting. Okay, that will bring us to the, uh, 2026 meeting schedule. Um, Kelly or Jason, you guys wanna talk about that?
It's just the normal, um, the normal days. Council meets second Tuesday of the month and all the rest. Everything's pretty standard. Um, redevelopment commission, there's a couple holidays that interferes with their meetings. So November and December, they meet on the third, uh, Thursday instead of the fourth.
And then council, you saw the email that Kelly sent out, I think it was today as well, with, uh, the holidays that the town will recognize uh, for next year, which coincides with the county as well.
Yes.
Oh, this is great for me.
Okay.
No, I just always miss the redevelopment commission meeting, so this is great.
Jason, if you could, uh, talk about billboards, please.
We have, I don't want to say we, there are two billboards that, um, on I-70 eastbound west of Pollo Hill that, uh, had been, or at least one of them had been used by the Putnam County CVB. We discovered it three, four months ago, probably, Brad. No one even knew it existed. It has electricity out there, the CVB's been paying for it for quite some time. It's on county property. The county agreed to allow the town to use that billboard if we decide we want to do that. I do have, uh, I'm getting some numbers together on what it would take to put a new sign on that. But also we have done some work out there where we've cleared out the brush. It was hidden completely. But we cleaned the brush out from the, the outside of the nuts right away. I still do not have permission to clean the brush out on the indocks right away. I spoke with them a couple of months ago and I followed up with them and I still don't hear back from them. That position, so, so I've had some difficulty getting an answer. Um, that's an anticipation of us if we decide we want to use those billboards. CVB's had them under a ninety-nine year lease, but the CVB does not seem to want to use those billboards again. Um, I've had conversations with Brandon about the possibility of using those in the future. The only cost associated with using them would be putting. Um, the only cost associated with using them would be putting a new, new art on them and then potentially the, uh, paying the monthly electric bill. Um, I had an electrician go out and look at the lighting, he's supposed to give me a number on what the lighting would cost to light these billboards. So, that's something you're gonna have to decide whether you want to do anything with these or not. The part that concerns me is if they get too dilapidated and they go to the ground, they will not be re-permitted. These, these billboards are permitted now and as long as you continue, they can stay there forever. Uh, CBB doesn't seem to have any interest, the county doesn't seem to have any interest. We, we decided to decide whether that billboard is of interest to us. Um, access to this is if you go past Cbar C. If you take that road where it dead ends, um, that was an old county road that used to go across the, well, before the interstate was there, would've gone across. That's where this billboard sits.
You can get, you can actually get through, go on the backside of the pond from Cbar C.
Okay, I didn't know that. Um, so that's billboard number one. I am getting numbers just for you guys to be able to make a good decision. Uh, asked Brandon if he wanted to start having that conversation and he said yes, so we put it on the, on the agenda. The second billboard is the much larger billboard, which is actually owned by Eric Hayman that sits, uh, directly northwest of the truck stop. Um, it's a big double billboard, you may remember, we measured, you remember the, the size of it? It's big.
It also has sixty feet wide.
Is that the, did cowpunks wrap that right when they first moved here? That first one, it's the double right there in the landing.
I don't think that they did this one.
This is the one out there by the safety of there.
By Hayman's safety, when they first moved here, they had a wrap and then they moved.
There is an old wrap there, but it's.
This one just says, this one says, welcome to Cloverdale, it doesn't have anything specific.
And that's not the one I'm thinking of.
Because as a matter of fact, Eric, Eric said that he would allow us to use that. He didn't want to have any private businesses on there, um, just because he didn't, he didn't want to, he didn't, he didn't wanna feel like it was catered into one and not all. So he was going to let us wrap again, it right now says, welcome to Cloverdale, there was a big tree in front of it, you, uh, we didn't.
Oh, you just cleared the tree, yeah.
Yeah, I cleared the tree.
What, three weeks ago or so?
Yeah, it's a couple of weeks.
Been longer than that.
You couldn't see the.
No, I, I know what you're talking about.
Yeah, there was a couple trees in front of it and some brush around it.
And it, currently I think the billboard, it highlights things to do within a county. Our goal or thought process here is to actually focus on the town itself to get passerbyers to pull off that exit, right? To, to come to the town for one reason or another, that's, that's our goal.
Just highlight, highlight a bunch of local businesses on those.
Correct. He, he just, he doesn't want us to just add any business that we're, he just doesn't want to be in there. Um, it's his sign, so, you know, we have to go with it, but he, he is gracious enough to let us use it. Yep, we so choose to do it, so hopefully I'll have some numbers for you on all of that. The third is the, the high, high tower that is, it was part of the old Holiday Inn. Um, it's up behind McDonald's, the big tower. It's, I called him three times and he's not calling back, but he had, as a matter of fact, he was supposed to come out and do an assessment of that, he was gonna charge to do an assessment and I talked to Brandon about that. And if, if they do the work, then they would take that, I think it was five hundred dollars to do the assessment, like probably just four hundred. Oh, I'm sorry. Um, but we, I called him, I got through that, from him, yeah. The type of thing, the high tower, it's been empty and vacant for.
Since I moved here.
Yeah. The owners of that, if they're willing to allow us to use that, if we can get it functioning again and put a sign up there, whatever it is, we would decide whether it's just welcome to Cloverdale or, um, but, you know, I'm sure it's probably gonna need some electrical work done up there. The cost would be a little, little more than the, the two billboards, um, but I think it gives credibility to our exit. You know, right now you drive by that exit, you can see it, it, it looks industrial and it's not very inviting to get off the interstate. I encourage people to get off the interstate for, for several reasons, but the, it's selfish reasons. One, when somebody gets off the interstate and stays at one of their hotels, they're paying five percent tax back to the Putnam County CBB, so we, we get money back. Um, but secondly, when somebody gets off the interstate and they go to Lou's Diner, or they go to McDonald's or Taco Bell, um, and they eat, they do pay a one percent tax back to the town that goes to help assist with, uh, water and wastewater projects. So, you know, there's, there's really, we really encourage people to get off and use those services because we do benefit. So, you know, I don't know how we can justify if a billboard does actually track people off of the interstate or not, I don't know. Um, I don't know how we could actually quantify that. Um, I would assume that would have some impact, um, and that's why, you know, we're just kind of looking into that, just some numbers and, uh, and see if this makes sense. I think Brandon was thinking spring if we.
I think, I think it's a great time. If, if we can get the quotes, council make a decision on which route we wanna go and get these, uh, get these signs up in spring, right, when people start traveling in after the holidays per se. I, I think it's an over, I think.
And well, and selfishly, like, obviously I won't promote Cbar C, but the amount of people that come into town for those horse shows and don't know there's anything past the Red Roof Inn. Like promote the, what all they've done to redo the downtown, like, I mean, I've got guys now that come in, they come in for the horse show and just go to Barbershop cause it's a cool barbershop, you know? Promote that kind of stuff that we actually have more past there.
Car and truck center. Car and truck center.
I mean, I would, I wouldn't be mad, but no, I mean, I, I think it's a great idea.
See, please keep moving forward.
I think we can do it pretty reasonable, at least there's no rent gonna be paid on these. Now, the only thing with the, the tower one, um, and when I did talk to Eric Hayman as a park owner and that property that's there, he's willing to let us use it, uh, the only issue would be is if, let's say somebody, a developer came in and needed that sign, um, you know, a hotel, we would have to come off that sign. I mean, he's gonna give that to whoever buys that property. So, it could be short-lived, but, but at the same time, if somebody did come in and need to go on that sign, I'm sure it's well worth it, so.
I'm sure it'd be okay.
Yeah, so, but.
Please.
Still working on that.
Yeah, please keep moving forward on that. Anything else? Perfect. No, I'm just kidding, Jason, you good?
I'm good.
Okay, um, anything from the audience? Yes, sir.
Couple things.
Yes.
One thing on the water bid that I said it is, is that gonna be kind of a conflict of interest since you've already announced the amount that you bid the first time?
I don't think you did.
Thought the total was already.
I don't think, did you? I don't think you did.
Numbers are thrown out, but it's unknown because we still don't know what the pipe's gonna be and the.
I just wanna.
I, what's we get their vinyl like?
Twenty-five or thirty-two or something.
Yeah, I don't remember, we didn't play the video.
You started asking, I understand the concern, but I was trying to.
I just do wanna open a can of.
No, absolutely, I agree, and I didn't question because I, I really don't, I could be wrong, but I don't think you, I don't think you did.
Second thing I got to say is, uh, for the Halloween deal.
The Halloween deal?
Yeah, trick or treating.
The upcoming one or?
No, the one we just had.
Oh, thanks.
Uh, Jason had me block Logan Street at Lafayette.
Yes.
I had probably fifty people say that was a fantastic idea, cause I, that's where I was stationed. Only had one irate homeowner and he was drunk and his wife apologized. Anyway, there was.
I know the guy.
Huh? Anyway, there was probably, for an hour solid, you could not see the pavement clear down to the corner. Headed east, that's how many people were there, four, five thousand, it was unreal.
Can I ask you, who volunteered along with you?
Uh, the one guy from.
Tony was here.
Tony, and his wife.
Bradley and Bradley were here.
Yeah, there was, I think there was three, three of us, well, who had, was it Tony that had his wife with him?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, he was down at the other end, I was on at Lafayette Logan. But it worked out well, I mean, they set out four barriers for him and I put them up and.
Thank you for doing that.
Oh, no problem.
Because obviously, everybody knows how big of a night that was for the town with everything going on, right? So again, uh, on behalf of the council, thank you so much.
And Wade even drove by and goes, thank you, Mr. Wallace, I said, okay. It was a good deal, it worked out fantastic.
Awesome.
No, that's great.
And they, they voiced the opinion that you should do it next year too, cause it's, it's so much safer.
Might have to look into that, even if there isn't, uh, a home available, right? Well, I think Halloween falls on a Saturday, so it won't matter, um, we'll look into that, perfect, thank you. Uh, anybody have anything else? If not, I will say, uh, on behalf of the town council, uh, I hope that everybody has a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Uh, and we will see everybody in January of twenty twenty-six. This meeting is adjourned.